The Hermontown Council meeting. So when I'm saying that I'm going to these meetings or encouraging the other council members to go to these meetings, it's not to find out what Hermontown is doing as far as their policies or how they're running their city. I really don't care. What am I saying? What I'm doing is trying to gather information on how to run our meetings better, smoother, encourage input, not have it turn into a free-for-all, and to see how they manage to do that. So I just wanted to make that clear. That being said, let's move on to, oh, question?
Tony, do you know if we'd be in violation of the open meeting law if the rest of the council would get on that Facebook page?
No, I think as long as you're not discussing city business back and forth with each other, you should be fine. It's perfectly fine to go and view what Mayor Heim is putting out there and...
Be careful what we respond.
Exactly, yes.
Any, any questions from any of you? And don't forget the comments or question basket on the back table. I know a lot of people don't like to speak up at a meeting, and I understand that. But feel free to write a question, and they will be given to me or to the appropriate staff member and addressed as soon as we can. For me, it'll be the next meeting. For the staff, they'll probably give you a call back within a week soon as we find the answer. All right, let's move on to correspondence.
I received a letter from Resource Renew, which is the rebranding of WLSSD, just noting their budget meetings for the 2026 budgeting schedule. Within the meeting, I did notice that they're talking about a the terminology that they use, a solid waste management fee, which they are looking at implementing. So I did share this with, I think, both Councillor Hendrickson and Councillor Johnson. It might be a good idea for someone from council and/or myself to attend some of these just so that we can have a little bit more understanding of what they're proposing, as well as a little input on, on that. So the dates that they have their meetings are listed in here. We obviously missed the August 6th meeting, but we have several more that we could attend.
Do you plan on going to all of them, or?
I wasn't planning on going to all of them, but I was thinking I would like to attend at least one of them for sure. Have you done that work?
Anybody else want to go?
We know what times those are. I saw all the dates, but I didn't see any times except on the public hearings. At 4:00 and 4:15, is that what all of these are then, or is that just a two main meeting?
So, but I can reach out and get your times on.
I saw most of their regular monthly meetings are five o'clock. There's normally the same Monday as our second meeting here.
Right, yeah, so they have one on August 25th, which would be our council meeting. I can reach out just to find out the times.
Anything else, Karen? Okay, the consent agenda. We have the minutes from July 28th, 2025 of the council meeting. We have claims from July 9th, 2025 to August 11th, 2025, totaling $91,348.75. Any discussion on either of these items? And I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a second.
Oh, second.
A motion by Councillor Hendrickson, second by Councillor Quay. I'll favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
opposed. Motion passes. Department reports. Financial report.
On the end of July 2025, in our checking account, we have $2,724,228.66. In our investment account, we have $1,620,396.96 for a total combined cash of $4,344,625.62. And this does include our first half tax apportionment, so they're kind of at the high point of our catfowl this right now.
Building and zoning.
All right, in the month of July, we have one administrative land split, one commercial plumbing permit, one residential demolition permit, two residential garages less than 1,200 square feet, one garage greater than, sorry, two garages greater than 1,200 square feet, two residential mechanical, three residential new dwellings, residential over-the-counter permits, we have seven, one rezone, right-of-way permit, total valuation $1,042,657.40, total fees collected $10,666.35.
Any questions for Karen? Okay, thank you. Public Works.
For Public Works, July 2025, starting with the road maintenance during July, our primary focus was ditching. The ditching operations along both sides of Rayvine Road, which is, we're still currently chipping away at. And that includes addressing any problem culvers either needing to be reset or replaced. Once this work is completed on Rayvine, planning to move to Wesnelston to perform ditching and culvert maintenance, followed by the backside of Fair Road. Each one of these roads will have gravel spread on them when all the ditching is completed. As of August 8th, we are approximately halfway through Mont, the right-of-ways through Old City. Completion is anticipated early September. Moving on to parks. We just basic standard operation through Old Park through July. The workflow was increased a little bit slightly there for neighborhood management. Utilities. Work continued through July, sewer lateral inspections along with follow-up inspections to ensure the repairs are being correctly. Justin Nelson has finished working through trimming all the grass from fire agents. There may be a miss, but most of them are completed as of right now. That helps with visibility and access to fire department and for him himself for maintenance purposes. Additionally, although not included in last month's report, currently added the surveillance system and the water tower, and that is currently all been running. That is going to be a requirement coming down the pipeline from Homeland Security. That's required for all municipal.
Any questions for Shane?
Just a comment on how Old Park looked for neighborhood management. Look very natural with this guy. Great turn off. Thank you for your stand for, uh, let them know. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. All right, Department of Parks.
All right, for the month of July, we had a single month record on the number of calls for service being at 42. Thirty-one medicals, three outside fire checks, two vehicle accidents, two lithesses, two disruption fires, one smoke-in-house call, and then one carbon monoxide as well. And then to go along with our busy month of calls, we had our two biggest events that we prepared for. The Red Run Five Day, that was another big success. After all bills were paid, the Fire Relief Association raised just over $18,000. A big thank to all of our local sponsors for their continued support of our event. And then National Night Out, we had a great time interacting with the community and serving food again this year. In total, we served just shy of 400 meals during the night. Gave away lots of fire department swag, and then had a blast having kids put pairs on the house fire prop in the ball field. So all in all, another successful year.
Back into your department. Good job. They had almost four. I know there was a lot of people there, but I think 396.
Yeah, that's great. The Red Run, it's a fantastic time. It always is. Good weather. Thank you. Animal control. Karen?
We'll be great next to each other.
Yeah.
You did an exercise.
Be a great thing.
That's for my.
Perfect. So a couple of these you have seen before, actually the first four you have seen before, they're just updated to show the themes that Animal Allies charged in July. The last two are new, and I think I actually added one more after this, the next day. There was a family of cats somewhere in the area of Bright Lake and West Calvary Road. It seems they have all been brought in now, they thought, mom and a bunch of kittens. So hopefully that's done because these cats are expensive.
I know. Thank you. We have a new deputy sheriff in Rice Lake, Deputy Nordine. Buffy, tell us a little bit about yourself. What's been going on?
So, like to apologize because I don't have the nice printed-out numbers. I don't know exactly how many traffic stops and whatnot were made. Just going over it in the bag, trying to play catch-up. I would imagine there's probably 40 traffic stops, a couple of vehicle accidents. I believe one of them was a personal injury vehicle accident. We were also in attendance for National Night Out, and that went well. We didn't have to fire holes at the fire department, but it still came by, so that was good. And Mike, by the way, I forgot to leave with that. Mike Nordine started with the Sheriff's Office here this year, about eight-year law enforcement experience in general. So if you have any questions or need anything, my office is right in here, and I can give out my work phone number and email if you guys need it.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, now we're onto good stuff. New business, 7.1 Council Base C applicants. We have three individuals that we have talked to, you can use, like, about a month ago. We have a new applicant, Mike Molitor.
Hi, Mayor.
I know another Mike. That's what.
He's a popular name in the segment.
I guess so. So the way that we're going to do this is we're going to have Mike come up first because we have not met him before. And then I will ask the other three applicants, Cheryl, Mike, and Lisa, to come up and just refresh our memories of who you are, a little bit about yourself, why you want to do this, and then we will have some discussions. So we'll start with Mike Molitor.
Well, thanks for having me, everybody. This is a real honor, especially to see some of y'all in real life. Mayor, Mr. Johnson. Also, I want to say I'm super disappointed. My wife is making tacos tonight, Taco Night, one out, so I'm here by myself. So, but my name again is Mike Molitor. I'm kind of newer to the area. My wife and I moved in to Brandon and Liz Zapp's old place on Martin Road. If you knew them, I know they were active in our fire department. And it has been paradise on her. We had lived our 13 years in Kenwood in a college neighborhood. And, yeah, when we moved there, it was a lot of single families and retirees, and over the 13 years, it just slowly corroded. And so we were lucky enough, and the timing was right, when we moved to Rice Lake, and it's just paradise. We love it here. We have great neighbors. I love the peace and the quiet. I know, living around, along the highway, that tends to apply it, but I can look out my window and I don't see keg stands anymore. Yeah, a little bit about me. I work for Trillium Services, which is near the airport. We provide disability services to adults and children. I've been there for about 25 years. I function as a program director there. I also serve on Duluth Edison Chart School's executive board, where I've been treasurer for the last year and a half. So I have some executive board experience. I did that because I've always been interested in how things work. Like, how does a school work? We all send our kids to school, and we don't think anything about it. So I went for the executive board and was elected, and now I have that skill. It's really interesting when you learn how schools run, and that's kind of how I came here too. Rice Lake has been in the news a lot. It's been kind of spicy, actually. And it got me thinking as I'm reading the news and some of the social media, like, wow, this is kind of surprising. I would kind of like to learn a little bit more. And the more I thought about it, it would be really interesting to see how a city like Rice Lake functions, right? We all live here. We all just expect utilities to be done and roads to be plowed and the culverts to be done in the spring, but just have a genuine interest in how that all works. So that led me here today. I saw the announcement, maybe on social media or the website, and there was just something that said, and I did, without putting really too much spout in. So here I am. I'm somebody that, as you get to know me, I'm pretty outgoing. I have a lot of strong opinions. I've developed a reputation on the Duluth Edison Chart School's board as somebody that's not afraid to speak up and dissent from time to time when something doesn't fall in line with how I think our mission and vision should line up. And I would be no different here, so.
Questions, Karen?
What's your biggest asset that you think you can bring to the council?
Well, I think my biggest asset is, for one, I'm a heck of a guy. Sorry. I have a lot of availability. I'm blessed to have a job where I'm essentially my own boss, and I believe I could be available for this job. I do understand that this job takes a degree of dedication and availability, right? It's not just something that you can do as a hobby. And so I respect that. And I'm at a place in my life now where my kids are old enough where they're fine, and I can devote the time necessary to do the work that's required for this great city as a board member.
What made you decide to apply for this now versus a month ago, when it was open?
That's a great question. It seemed like this was a great opportunity now. I didn't know about this opportunity a month ago. I tend to follow politics rather loosely. And as I said earlier, our city council and our, it has been in the news a little bit more than usual. And so honestly, Mayor, I think it's just the timing. Where, had it been any other day, maybe I would have put a lot of more thought into it, but the timing was right for me, and I thought, what the heck? We'll try it.
That's how it's happened.
Yeah.
I don't really have much for a question, but we're glad to hear.
Thank you for having me.
I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Hey, thank you for applying. This is a great opportunity here. And I've done it twice now, and I really enjoy serving. How many times have you been up to Rice Lake's National Night Out?
One time, I believe, when we first moved here. I don't know why I'm using the microphone. You're right next to me. Yeah. Yeah, I think of one time. And it sometimes had to do with work obligations. One year, we were on vacation. But, yeah, we were not there last, I think it was last Tuesday, right? So, yeah, this one time.
Can you scoop ice cream?
That's, that's, you took the words right out of my mouth.
Mayor, I could scoop ice cream when the wind blows.
One other question. Where do you get all your information about things happening in Rice Lake?
Oh, that's a great question. The internet, you have to be very careful with. There's a lot of disinformation on the internet, and it's really easy to go down that worm. So a lot of it will be just from friends and neighbors or talking to the person that works at the QuickTrip on the corner, or as I like to call it, the quick lick, you know? And just having those conversations with your neighbors and things like that. The guy, the guys at Doorco that fixed my garage last summer, you know, while they're out there just chit-chatting and getting to know each other and talking about this and that and the other. So I'm really careful not to go down that internet wormhole. Mainly because you just can't believe everything that you read.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time. This was awesome. Thanks.
Thanks, thank you.
Cheryl? Line up and promote yourself once more.
Then who am I? I'm Cheryl Chathair. I am born and raised here. My family's Solomon Anderson. So I have deep roots with Rice Lake. I care about Rice Lake, care about the people, the community, what happens here. So a lot of invested interest in all of it. So that is how I kind of, and I know there's a lot going on right now, and I don't believe everything on Facebook or whatever. I get that. And I know I have my own little Facebook page, but I don't have a lot going on there. I know it's on one of, well, one of the other ones anyway, but but I think that people do need to talk, whether we agree or not. It's all about coming together, figuring things out, and deciding from there. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm honest and ethical, and I want to be transparent as much as possible with people, but deciding the best interest of the residents is what's important. So even if you don't always agree with stuff, you have to do what's best for the community and the people who live here. So I would like to make that different.
Okay, thank you.
Mic number three. Turn the mics into Justin's if they were kind of taking over Rice Lake.
Number four.
I'm Mike Cheka. I work at electrical engineer at Minnesota Power. I grew up in Rice Lake on the Fairby Road where I live now. Moved back here, joined the Navy, moved back here in 2020, first on Martin Road and then to the new Fairby Road. So the reason I want to do this is I think, I think I have a good temperament for it. You know, I don't, I don't get upset when I disagree with people or people disagree with me. And I think that's conducive to having a rational discussion about things. And I think, I think that's what we need more of in the city right now. And so I really applaud your efforts lately to kind of streamline these meetings to encourage more public discourse. And I was excited by that. What else am I supposed to answer? Yeah. All I have to say.
That's fine. Thank you. And Lisa.
Like this was deja vu. Look, number three. My name is Lisa Walsh. I live on the West Tisher Road. I've been there for about twenty-two years, I think it is now. I work from home. I have worked for the same company for twenty-three years in a plethora of roles, from anywhere from project manager to legal and compliance to writing documentation, customer service, anything that you can kind of think of. In my twenty-two years, I've tried little bits and pieces of all of it. I have always wanted to be involved with the city and for a long time didn't know how to go about doing it. And also aging parents kind of took time. Unfortunately, both my parents are gone now, so I have more time and I have no children. So it gives me a lot of free time. And with my job, I have a lot of flexibility because I work from home and where I'm at. And I'm what is a digital integration director. So I do, I'm a dork. I do backend computer stuff with writing SQL and all that stuff. But I'm a left and right great thinker outside of pottery studio, so I can think in and outside the box. And I like being able to be that way. It brings on a lot more challenges and gives me a lot more, more room to be rational. I liked his word rational. I do a very calm and even temperament. My dad was a very calm, cool, collected man who worked in law enforcement and taught me well. Even when he might be raging a fire inside, there is a nice way to say everything, whether you, and communicate it nicely without being rude and bullying and all that kind of thing. So yeah, I enjoyed volunteering at National Night Out. That was fun. Sticky. When I got home, I had to wash my shoes because not only did I spill ice cream on them, I also dumped a cooler. Jamie was there. I dumped a cooler of ice water on myself. But it was fun. It was fun to see all the kids. They had a really great time. Especially with the base painting lady, whoever she was, was amazing. She was so nice to stay late to let, to finish all the kids. But anyway, good job on that. What else do you want to know? Questions?
I think we're good. All right. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. We have four outstanding candidates. Let's have some discussion.
I think we should all fire each other and then just.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I mean, I think they're all really good candidates. I really appreciate it. And meeting Mike for the first time. He did very good. We have a decision. I wasn't involved in it. Yeah, first time.
Yeah. I don't think we've ever had as many so qualified.
I really enjoyed listening to everybody. I think anyone that we choose is going to be really nice to look with. My temperament is, I think, similar to, you know, I think we can discuss things pretty easily, whether we agree or not. And so kind of, I don't want to choose this. I'm, I'm, I actually, I really enjoyed listening to everybody. And I think we could work with all four of you. So and I think you guys would all do a great job with the city too.
And that, I just want to point out, once again, this is a temporary appointment. A little over a year before the next election comes up. So this opportunity will come back if all four of you or whoever else might be interested. I just would like to see you keep that interest. And I'm not crazy about an appointment for this position. It should be done on election day, the November. Ideal.
It will be next fall.
Maintain that interest and stay involved, get involved and stay involved with other issues that we've got to deal with. Encourage that.
All right, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go down the list, read the names, and let's look at some pros of each one of those. And then that will help us choose who will the strongest reason that we have. And it was probably Mike Moller.
I liked his energy and that was pretty neat.
I like his sense of humor because I kind of like that type of thing myself. I also like that he does have some experience on working with boards.
Public speaking was entertaining and done well. Background, it sounded like in business management. Takes the rocket plan to do these jobs is pretty difficult.
No, it just takes a thick skin.
Like your energy, Mike. Very excited to meet you, like I said, and I think you'd bring some fun for our group and we'd like that. We want to make this as fun as we can, but as serious as we can and take care of our taxpayers.
All right, how about Cheryl?
Kind of like that with her job, she already has some zoning experience. Might be able to help me understand that a little better.
I like her availability because a lot of this work is done during the day. And to be able to be here for all of those shifts, I think she's well spoken. I wouldn't mind having her work. But that would not be the basis of my decision. What's your opinion?
I like that she has been along Chinese. There's something to be said for that. Not a pre-wash, but necessary for anybody. Family's been around here for a long time. I like her energy, her interest in it.
Counselor Jess, I like Cheryl's construction background just because that's kind of who I am. And I just like she's been a resident for a long time. It is, they're all good choices tonight.
Yes.
Cheryl, I appreciate you coming back to chat with us and gave this opportunity.
All right, that brings us to Mike Jekka.
I love that he's a Navy guy. I like this. It takes a lot to be, to serve our country is a huge, huge thing. And you need a thick skin, like you said, right? I think if you're in the Navy and you've gone through all that stuff you need to go through there, you can handle just about anything that comes up here. And another thing written down, you seem calm and to me, I like that as well. So a couple of things there.
I like the fact that he has volunteered his time on the fire department for many, many years. It's a big commitment. With very little thanks, I appreciate that. I also think he is calm. I have read some of the things he's written where he has expressed his views. He does so in a very open, respectful manner. And I like that a great deal. What's private?
Well, I'm impressed with the volunteer for the fire department certainly. I think he'd fit for his position, like I told him. That type of awesome Navy veteran, Army veteran, say, nobody's perfect. Well, thank you for that.
I agree with Counselor Quaid. No, thank you for your service. You guys served in the military and you served in the Navy. I really think highly of them. It's a big thing for me, Mike. Serving our country is a big thing and serving our community is another big thing. And I appreciate you stepping forward to do that also.
And then Lisa.
First off, thanks for coming the last few. I know all three of you have come to the last couple and it's been really nice to see you guys here. Lisa, I think the last time you said that one of your biggest assets was being nice in the sandbox. And I think like we are gonna disagree at times, but I think that's a huge, huge thing is to be able to agree to disagree, maybe, but still work towards something that's best for the city. So that really stuck with me the last time.
I remember, Lisa, when you started coming to meetings and it was because there were some issues that were controversial. And you came in and had done a lot of research on that, which I respect a great deal. You went down some trails that veered off a little bit, but as soon as that was brought to your attention, you acknowledged that and backed right, backed right up. In seeing that, I feel that you would be, I'm not going to say easy to work with because you're very, very thorough, but you could definitely keep us on our toes, which I think is a good thing. So I appreciate what you have done. I mean, you have also volunteered to be on planning and zoning. I appreciate your efforts.
I like her style too. She's, she's been here for upcoming, for a few meetings. I think she's got a lot of skills, especially a lot of good stuff like this kind of stuff. Yeah, once again, they're, they're all very, very good. We're like, we're fortunate to have this many people that are just interested.
Yeah, I appreciate you helping us out and scooping ice cream and doing the repair.
She does. Go and scoop ice cream.
Yeah, I really do. We were shorthanded that night. But also I appreciate you stepping forward and being on the planning commission. That is a great place to start in this community and understand that. So I appreciate you coming to all the meetings. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to say one thing that there's a fellow in the audience here tonight that I really expect to have his name on here.
Yeah, me too.
We'll talk about it.
You're wised up, huh? All right. We kind of fumbled through a little bit here now. So are you ready to swing at the city? I feel like I'm on a game show.
I'm ready myself personally. We've had a month. Yeah, we've had either one. There was someone that I need.
I even suggested names and a hat.
We shot that down.
I know what you did.
What would you think if we just went down the road and we each said who we would move to fill this position?
I don't need to do that.
Is that all right with everybody?
What if we get four different names?
Well, then we're back to the more discussion.
Shouldn't it be in the form of a resolution?
Well, before, yes, but let's see if we have some common ground here and then we're ready for a motion.
I nominate Mike Jekka. His service to our community and country is outstanding. He handled himself very well running the fire hall meeting that I attended in June. And his calm demeanor during the first interview process and especially afterwards was very good. His heart is definitely in our community as a volunteer fire department. Appreciate his service.
We're not looking for nomination yet.
Oh, did I say that?
Yeah. Counselor Wade?
Mike Kuckiparol, we agree.
And I would be going with Lisa Walsh. Reason being, she she does her research. She's pleasant to work with. I think she's very articulate. I think she'd be a good addition to the council, bringing in a different viewpoint than maybe the four of us would bring at all the time. Well, I mean, yes, you know, men are from Mars, women are from Venus. But you know, or maybe it's the other way around. I don't know. But no, it's not the fact that she's a woman. I just like where she's coming from. I like the different viewpoints that she brings to our meetings.
Mike, I wish I knew you a little bit better. So that's unfortunate because I, on this one, because I feel like it'd be pretty strong and I don't know quite yet. I also like Mike. I also like Lisa's opposing views too. Well, this one's, this one's hard. Yeah, I chose two.
Can we increase our council seats? I think so. You just have to rotate who gets to vote that week.
Well, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mike Jekka.
I hear a second.
All support.
Counselor Johnson made a motion. Counselor Quaid seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'll host. Mike Jekka will be our new counselor. And for the other three of you, keep in mind, in a little over a year, there is an election. There will be two council seats on that ballot. There will also be a special election for the mayor on that ballot. So please continue to So, please continue to come to these meetings and if you're still. You're still willing in a year after attending meetings and see how everything goes. It only costs two dollars to register to, uh, be a candidate, please keep it in mind.
And then two years after that, there will be another open seat.
Alright, um. We will swear in our new counselor at our next council meeting in two weeks. At that time, we will also be taking a look at the various committees that all of us serve on and do a little readjusting. So I think Tony, have you sent that list out?
I did, didn't you?
Yes, so make sure that you have reviewed that list, if there are committees that you are on. That you would maybe like to bring it out and try something new. Please bring that to the next meeting and we will give assignments. Alright, thank you. Seven point two is CDBG member appointment. Um, it's CDBG, what does it stand for?
Unity Development Cooperative.
Yes, this is a committee, it's a county committee. That I have served on in the past, um, I have stepped down from that position, it needs to be filled and it does not need to be filled by a member. Of council, it needs to just be a member of our community. What this appointment does is they get funds from HUD. And they get applications from various. Communities in St. Louis County that would like to have monies. Branded to them for various projects that they have in the works. So, this is something that isn't, um, it's not a meeting that you go to on a monthly basis. There is a lot of homework to be done when the grant applications. Uh, are accepted and sent out for review of the panel. And then there are four meetings where those, um. Those projects are compared against one another and money is generated or given out. Based on the merits of each request. Someone from our community has applied Travis Cool. Is that how you say it? I think so. Okay. Um, in looking at his background information, I don't see any reason why he wouldn't be able to fulfill this. Uh, we, we received this from CEG, correct? He applied directly to them or did he apply to us?
He applied to St. Louis County.
To St. Louis County?
Yeah.
And then they forward it to us?
Yes, yeah, so they're looking for.
Just.
An endorsement and then they will make the final.
Okay.
Appointments to the committee.
Okay. So again, this is not why I'm going to ask for public input simply because we're just making a recommendation to the county. And none of, I don't believe any of you know this individual personally, do any of you?
I, I don't know him, but he, he works for the ARTC, uh. I, I think this is a great fit. This is the guy.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, he spoke to the council last fall.
I remember that.
We've got a great guy to fill this position.
Perfect. I believe it's a three-year term or, I don't know for sure, I believe it is three years.
Yeah, settlements for life.
It's a three-year term, they can renew for another three years and then. They have to step back for at least three years, so. It was fun, I totally enjoyed, totally enjoyed this. Okay, I'm looking for a motion then to appoint Travis.
I'll make a motion to appoint Travis Cool, who is a CDBG member.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Counselor Johnson made the motion. Counselor Henderson did the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, okay, motion passes. Now, the next is portable radios for the fire departments.
Alright, um, so. The city of Long Lake, Minnesota, uh, Fire Department are upgrading their portable radios that they currently have to, uh, new. New model, uh, APX six or eight thousands, um, and so they were selling, uh. Twenty APX four thousand and seven APX six thousand radios, um. The current radios, uh, that are, the majority of our members on our fire department have are, um. Obsolete, unsupported, uh, portable radios, so when one goes down, you lose that radio from our, uh, catch. That being said, the, um, four thousand model radios that Long Lake is, um, selling. They're asking for two hundred fifty dollars each and then the six hundred series is five hundred dollars each. Um, normally those radios go for seventeen hundred, uh, for the four thousand model. And, uh, four thousand dollars for the six thousand model, so this is a substantial cost savings opportunity for us. Um, what this also does is, uh, there's new mandates that are going to be coming at some point in time. That I talked about, uh, previously on our capital improvements plan, um, regarding the need for radios to be encryption cable. Right now, uh, when we first received our automatic system radios, which are the digital system for the state. Um, that was funded by the state. Currently, there is no plan in place to replace those radios from a state level. They've been doing some research and just the Arrowhead region alone, it would cost, uh, three hundred and seven, or, excuse me. Uh, two hundred and seventy-six million dollars. So, um, what this allows us to do is, uh, update our current cash radios to. Um, something that will last at least another, you know, five, seven years. Um, to be able to seek out additional grant funding. Last fall, early winter, uh, we submitted a, uh, AFG grant to the federal government. Um, to purchase all new APX six thousand radios and that ass was for three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Total cost of this, uh, project is ten thousand eight hundred and it comes directly out of our operating budget. Um, so it's no additional money being asked for, we have the money available to pay our budget. I am asking for council to make a decision on this tonight because Long Lake is holding them for us. Uh, in our environment, based on the decision and outcome from tonight's. If Carlo chooses not to make a recommendation on this tonight, they will go back out onto the market for any other fire element in the state. Questions? It's already in your budget, right? It is in my.
Good. Thank you for finding us.
Yeah. That's a steal, I think.
It is, yeah. Any input from the public?
Is it good?
Yes, it is. Kudos, yeah. Okay, then I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to prove the purchase of the twenty-seventh use radios.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Henderson made the motion, Counselor Quaid seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the last one is public comment length during meetings, I am bringing this. We didn't have it so much at this meeting, um, but with encouraging public input. Throughout the meeting, we saw in our last meeting, our meeting went until eight o'clock. Um, I don't have a problem with it being till eight o'clock. But if everybody speaks for five minutes, as we currently allow, we could be talking without nine, nine thirty sometimes. Um, both Herman Town and Proctor limit public input to three minutes. Proctor does not allow any public input at any time other than the beginning of the meeting. Where the normal public input part would be. Herman Town allows then also throughout the meeting as we have started to do. So I would like to limit our public comments to three minutes versus five. Thoughts?
I'm okay with that, I just mean, I would be fine with it too, if, if somebody's delivering a message that takes for more than three minutes.
We can adjust. Any public comment on this?
Are we allowed to donate our time to somebody else if we know they need a little bit more time, maybe if you're nervous public speaker, so it takes them a little. As another sentence, they all donate my praise, we can finish their statement.
If you're, if you're there to talk about the same topic, I don't see a problem with that. Because typically, if there are a group of people that we know are here for one particular item. We have in the past set, choose a speaker and come on up, so that we're not hearing the same thing. Ten different times, that's redundant, yeah, yeah, so yeah, I, I think that's a good suggestion.
I would say that that could lead into like thirty minute. Each.
By what?
We should cap that.
Cap that.
At some point.
Good point, yeah, capping it. Still no longer than, say, six minutes instead of three, I think that would be fair, okay. Charlie?
I've noticed recently, in the last year or so, it seems like there's a lot more and I'm doing it right now. Um, a lot more comment just from the floor and back.
You're right.
Um, and is that going to continue to be the case? Or is there going to be a requirement that you get up, you would state your name and address and?
Yeah, that is, that's totally on me and yes. We will request people to come up to the podium, name, address, and then say their piece.
At the appropriate time.
At the, well, when I ask for it, yes.
So I'm sure.
Before.
Yeah, yeah, and again, that's on me, I'm still learning the ropes up here. So I'm glad you brought it up.
Were you referencing then leaning towards the Herman Town one then, so like, uh, like a public in the beginning and then throughout? You said you would just ask for input and at that time approach the podium?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so. Back and forth, like open and then back and forth, there would be like open throughout, you would ask.
In my turn, yes. So do we need a motion on this, Tony?
Um, I don't think so, I think, um, when we kind of finalize our whole process, it'll just be something we can.
Okay.
Encompass in that, I believe it was stated somewhere on that sheet that I done for Herman Town. Where I kind of took where they're, make a blame when public comment is allowed. Uh, so I'll just go through that and make sure.
Okay.
From those states, but what your intentions are.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so we're all on the same page there? Okay. That is not the pastor. Um, alright, then we have unfinished business, do we have any? Then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
But move.
Long Quaid made the motion.
Adjourned.